Our solicitor was just commenting on the fact that his seat seems to be shorter and my seat seems to be taller this evening. I did not switch the chairs. Whoever did, I thank. With that, we'll get started with our reorganization meeting and call to order. We'll start with the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Secretary will note the roll, please. This time, I will turn it over to our solicitor.
For those of you who have heard this speech every year for multiple years, I apologize. I've been asked to explain what we're doing tonight, and for those of the public, the school code requires that every year, the first week of December, the school board reorganize. And essentially, the major function is to elect a president, a vice president. In our case, our secretary and treasurer are staying in place, so we don't have to replace them. If they had not come back to the board, we'd have those terms to fill if they were board members, which they are here. There's going to be two meetings tonight. We will ask for public comment on the first meeting, which is this reorganization meeting. Let me respectfully suggest to the audience that certainly we're pleased to have you participate, but if you're here for a general school board issue or something on our business agenda, please hold that, because this meeting is going to be, hopefully, relatively short, relatively sweet, and we'll reorganize. After that, we will adjourn this meeting, and then we'll go into our regular business meeting. And certainly, again, we will take public comment, but if you have public comment on agenda items that are on the business agenda, we ask that you hold that. This meeting that we're going to conduct right now is purely for the purpose of electing officers. The first thing that happens is that we have to elect a temporary president, and that temporary president comes from what is called holdover board members. And we have three holdover board members, meaning that people that are still in their middle of their term. Six of our board members were either elected for a four-year term, or I guess somebody was also elected for a two-year term. So what we'll do is we'll elect a temporary president. That person then has the ability and the right and the authority to swear in the six. I don't want to be dismissive of an important night or event, but in that, everybody's coming back. Somebody wants to get sworn in separately. In order to expedite this, I'd ask everybody to just come up and affirm or swear to their oath, and we'll move on with our meeting and then elect our officers. With that, I'm going to ask for, from the three holdover board members, that someone make a motion for a temporary chair to conduct the order.
I'd like to nominate Bob Lindgren as temporary president.
Okay, so you, Chuck, and Bob vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Robert, go about your business.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, I will start off by asking if there's any public comment on the items to be taken care of on this reorganization meeting. Seeing none, as usual, move on. We'll go ahead and close out. We've taken care of the temporary president, and we will go ahead and ask that our members come forward. Are... We've got all six, right?
Read that oath. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, we're going to have them come forward.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. They can all put their hand on the Bible or put a fingertip on it.
I'll tell you why I won't do that.
Put around or stay here?
Which way you want to.
Let's do over here where there's some room. How about?
All right.
Is there somebody who's going to take a picture for us?
I think we got a couple of pictures.
Mr. Drantl.
Mr. Drantl.
I knew you had some value.
Wow.
Cold.
Red in, red in.
Red in, up and in.
It's a little green.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Raise my right hand.
All right. Okay. Aye and state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
With my office with fidelity.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Welcome back. It was great, yes. Indeed.
Good one for those sent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Good luck. I'd bug them another sentence of four years.
Al? Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks. All of the other positions, I think, are all existing, but I don't think there's anything open here of all the other positions.
No, the only thing you got is you have your...
Number six.
You have a Western appointment, I presume. Well, we got to elect a president or vice president.
Yeah, number six. All right.
Half of the year.
Very good. All right, since we've done that, I was going to skip right over that.
You're doing...
Vox has got to be...
You're annoying yourself?
Yeah, I was just going to annoy myself. I guess we can't really do that. All right, so...
Put it up, second.
Sure. Since we've seated everybody, I guess we're going to have an actual nomination for the office of President of the School Board. We're going to open it up. Would anybody care to nominate anybody for President of the School Board?
I'd like to make a nomination of Bob Lindgren.
Second.
I'd like to make a nomination to close nominations. Motion to close.
Okay, very good. I'll accept... We have a motion to close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All those in favor of Robert Lindgren for School Board, President, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. I appreciate that very kindly.
Thank you.
Very humble. Nominations now for Vice President.
Like nominate Al Leach, Vice President?
We have a motion and a second for Al Leach.
Motion to close nomination.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, very good. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of Al Leach for Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Thank you.
Very good. And we... Western Center. And so, Ashley.
Yes.
We have... Ashley, your term is ending on the Western Center as of December, as of this year. Would you like to say on as our representative at the job?
Yes.
4/19, okay. That being the case, would anybody care to renominate Ashley for another term at the Western Center?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Would anybody care to close nominations for Western Center?
I recommend...
Make a motion to close nominations.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to close nominations. If there are none opposed, all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. I appreciate that very kindly.
Thank you.
Very humble. Nominations now for Vice President.
Like nominate Al Leach, Vice President?
We have a motion and a second for Al Leach.
Motion to close nomination.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, very good. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of Al Leach for Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Thank you.
Very good. And we... Western Center. And so, Ashley.
Yes.
We have... Ashley, your term is ending on the Western Center as of December, as of this year.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to say on as our representative at the job?
Yes.
4/19, okay. That being the case, would anybody care to renominate Ashley for another term at the Western Center?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Would anybody care to close nominations for Western Center?
I recommend...
Make a motion to close nominations.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to close nominations. If there are none opposed, all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of Al Leach for Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Thank you.
Very good. And we... Western Center. And so, Ashley.
Yes.
We have... Ashley, your term is ending on the Western Center as of December, as of this year.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to say on as our representative at the job?
Yes.
4/19, okay. That being the case, would anybody care to renominate Ashley for another term at the Western Center?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Would anybody care to close nominations for Western Center?
I don't think...
Make a motion to close nominations.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to close nominations. If there are none opposed, all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of Ashley Custer for the term, or for the next... Reappointing Ashley for the term, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Just getting me out of that for basically to 2022. Thank you very much. And the MCIU Legislative Liaison, we had a bit of confusion on this. It has me down there on that one, but I was actually... I'm actually the MCIU Liaison. The MCI Legislative Liaison is Dr. Nipper. So if we've got a... It's an appointment, isn't it? It's an appointment.
It says it's a term of one year.
It does not appear, but one-year term.
Okay.
One-year appointment.
Donald Fobiscum, you are the MCIU Legislative Liaison for a year. So that's done. PSBA Liaison, that will continue to be Patty for another year, Patty Grimm. And we'll sort out committee liaisons another time. Okay. I will accept a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the reorganization meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. We want a five-minute break, or we want to press on?
Press on.
Press on. I vote. You're tired. Well, well done, you. All right. Very good. With that being said, we will call to order the regular School Board meeting for December 3, 2019. Are you ready?
Almost.
Almost, I'll wait. I am going to go out of regular order here. I just called it to order the second item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we've already done that. I think we can overdo our pledge, Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to go to roll call. We have the same attendance here, other than Ashley. 2.1 executive session. We had an executive session prior to the meeting tonight to discuss a litigation matter and personnel, so we've got that announcement out of the way. We'll go on to public comment. You don't have to hold your comment for the reorganization meeting. Any public comment that you would care to make at this time is fair game. Does anybody have anything they would like to share with the board this evening? Seeing and hearing nothing, we can move on.
Question.
I'm sorry.
And that might be a...
You're not, as a matter of fact. This is exactly the time.
I have a personal tax issue. I had...
We're going to need just a little bit of information. Your name...
My name's Tom Beck. My wife and I, we are 20-year residents of Aspen, driving up from Potters Grove. Every year, we pop our tax bill in the mail and send it off to Diane DeLong, and everything goes fine, except for this year, when the post office destroyed our tax bill, and they sent me the remnants of it. Unfortunately, we incurred the penalty in the time that we realized that the tax bill never got to Diane's office. So I've been in constant contact with her and with your business office, and they told me the only way to get any kind of relief from paying that penalty was to come up here before you tonight and ask for relief from the penalty phase of that tax bill. So I have the evidence where I paid the check, and I have the shreds of the envelope that the post office sent me back, so I don't know if you're interested in seeing that or what.
Well, the short version is, I'm certainly not going to be able to forensically put it together tonight right now, and we can certainly ask you to pass the information along to our business manager, and I know that I heard what you said, and you've already been talking with him, but now we've all heard it, and we've got it on tape, so now we all will follow up on this with you and our superintendent and our solicitor, so we've all been made aware.
Okay.
So now you've got our attention, and we'll follow up on this, so you can pass it along to him, Mr. Nestor, right now, and we'll follow up on it, but I'm not going to take it and look at it tonight. All right? Does anybody else have a forensic challenge for us this evening, or otherwise? No. All right, then. We'll move on to approval of the monthly board minutes.
Okay, we're asking the board to approve the monthly board minutes for November 12, as recommended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the November 12 board meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to the report of the superintendent, I'd ask our student board reps, Brianna and Madison, to please report out if you would, please.
Hello. Okay, so on November 22, Maddie and I visited with students from Ring Rocks Elementary to do a Falcon Feedback session with them. The first question, and as always, that we asked them was, what does Potters Grove do great? They said that they love their teachers, they always feel safe, they like learning new things, they like the math that they're learning right now. They told us many, many times that they like doing bar models, which is what they're learning, so it was very sweet. Love bar models. They like the lunches. They said that Friday's the best because it's pizza day, and they were also excited to tell us that the cafeteria serves all five food groups. They're very excited about that. They like learning science. I think the first graders are the ones learning about rocks right now. The teachers use kind words. They like having recess. They like their specials, especially music, because they get to play instruments. They like their golden ticket system. Everyone has good sportsmanship, and the teachers don't get mad at them. The second question that we asked them was, what can Potters Grove do better? They said more recess time, having an indoor playground for when they have indoor recess. They said that some of the classrooms are too small, they want to play more games, they want more specials, and they were very excited about the idea of having a class pet. They would like to have class pets, so...
And the third question we asked them was, what do you dream Potters Grove can be? And they didn't get this the first couple of times, so we had to rephrase it for them and said, in your perfect vision of Potters Grove, what would you like it to be? They said everyone is nice to each other, everybody's always happy, everyone helps one another, everyone is friends to each other, and everybody loves coming to school. For the last question, we said, what can you do personally to make Potters Grove a better place? They said we could congratulate other students, put in effort, do your work, follow the Falcon Four, make people feel like they belong, include people, make people feel welcome, and help people understand things when they're confused. On a different note, on the 21st of November, the high school held a leadership conference. 14 different schools attended, and we hosted around 400 other people. Dr. Philip Campell from Johnson Renaissance, a former educator and administrator, came to talk about leadership and school culture. He spoke a lot about what each of us can do to make our school a better place and a place where people really want to be. He talked about the physical changes we can do around the school and what we can do in changing our words and actions to help build a more positive school culture. The program was very interactive. Students were up and moving around, dancing and meeting with other schools. We got to talk to the students about their schools and what they do to build a positive school culture. He also asked us lots of questions that we had to respond and have discussions about. He included a PowerPoint presentation full of things that he implemented at his own school to give us some ideas about what we can do to change our own. Everyone that we talked to afterwards said that they really enjoyed the presentation and that he was the best speaker that we've had at our school.
Please, a couple of questions. Specials. They said they wanted more specials, like more of the same specials, or did they throw something out there like kite flying? I don't know what, but I mean, do they give you specifics?
No, it was more along the lines of they want to spend more time in art class, they want to spend more time in music, not necessarily like different ones, just...
More of the same.
Yeah, basically.
God, okay. And then for the Leadership Council or the Leadership Meeting, you said he spoke about making physical changes to the school, like, give me a...
He talked about some of the things that he did at his school, and he said, you know, what's one thing that you could change? And everyone, all of his students said the bathrooms, so they repainted them and they, you know, put pretty decorations up in the bathroom and made it look all nice and got new mirrors, because they had dirty mirrors and things like that. So, and they implemented the system where they allowed students to paint their parking spots, and that was like a fundraiser. So it was just like, you know, little things to like, you know, get excited about around the school.
All right, thank you.
Could you briefly describe the golden ticket system?
Sure. So when a teacher catches a student doing one of the Falcon Four, they are, be safe, be respectful, be responsible, and be positive, they'll write a student a golden ticket, and the student will take the golden ticket down to the office, and I believe their names at the end of the week are announced over the loudspeaker, like, these students received golden tickets. And then I think, my understanding is that one of them gets drawn at the end of the week? Is that...
So with the golden ticket system, when they bring their ticket to the office, they get a lot of praise and hoopla from the office staff, and they get a pencil, a principal's pencil, and they do get to go to the office on Friday, their names are announced, they help me lead the pledge, they help sing the school song over the announcements.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you both. Moving on to discussion items, the goals of the superintendent. Obviously, as a board, you had a chance to review these goals throughout the last six weeks. I just wanted to briefly, for the public, just comment on the four main goals that we'll be looking at this year. Our goal has, will be to increase student achievement and growth. We will have goals that will, that will be assessed by, you know, the PSSA and state standards. We've done that for the past four years. We also look at growth through map testing, and again, the PSSAs really rate us on a state level, the map testing rates us on a national level in reading and math, so we feel those pieces are really good indicators of our students' academic success, and it gives our administrators targets and their teachers to really have our students perform very well. Also, we look at other achievement levels. We look at SAT scores, ACT scores, ARNIQ scores from our Western Center, AP testing as we look at state, national, and global levels. So we'll continue with that on the growth and achievement side. On the professional development side, we continue to, we'll continue to refine our IST model and our MTSS, multi-tier systems of support through our, through this school year. One of the things that we concentrate on will be our instructional strategies that focus on teachers continually using effective research-based and technology integration strategies for the upcoming year. And we also continue to train our teachers on trauma-informed, as well as educate them on understanding classroom strategies for engaging students and decrease behavioral problems. So that will be as part of our professional development component. We always have a financial, a fiscal component that will be for this particular school year. We always want to have a balanced budget that reflects the lowest tax increase while maintaining the integrity of our instructional programs and co-curricular activities. We'll continue to use that as a goal. We also look at expenditure variance to have it under 2.5%, and we keep our building budgets to a spending increase of less than 1%. And I must say, you know, over the last four years, we've done an excellent job as a board, as administrative team, and at our building levels to stay within these particular numbers. Goal four is basically to provide relevant communication to each stakeholder group. Our focus this year, as we continue to look at our satisfaction survey, we'll put that out under the end of the school year, we continue to look at our communications through school wires and our web pages. Our overall building communications at each school will be a part of, will be part of that goal. Our budget communications, as they pick up here in the new year, our Safe Schools Partnership Program that we've had in our second year, the Potters Grove Village, has been a part of our communication plan. Our annual report, we'll have a second year of our annual reports, some more information will be out there regarding that as well. And we've already had our calendar committee for the 2021 school year as a way to have an interaction piece with our community. We look to further brand the Potters Grove School District and try to add to our value in the community and the surrounding area. We continue to develop our education foundation. We made great strides there. We continue to work with that, continue to have a diverse co-curricular program in grades three through eight. Again, we continue with that goal, and we continue to look at, furthering develop our social media presence to communicate and promote community relations. Also, one of the things that we're working on, and we'll be kicking off here this month, is establish a district-level marketing framework that focuses on our charter school families, brick and mortar, and cyber, and develop a framework with procedures and documents that promotes the school districts and halves our students who aren't in our schools to reacquaint them with the Potters Grove School District. So we'll be kicking that piece off in the next couple of weeks before, before the break. We also established a MyVoice platform that the board approved last year for improving our school through teacher voice and agency. We'll do a presentation in the new year about how that's worked at the building level, and our early results is that we're doing a lot of building-specific pieces that has helped, helped our teachers really have skin in the game, if you will, and have a say at the building level. So that's an overview of the four superintendents' goals, and what I'm going to, you know, ask the board to do tonight is to prove those goals as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments on the goals? Okay. Well, I do have one comment.
Sure.
There was a lot of discussion among the board on the goal, especially of the percentage of what we were talking about for the increase, you know, the goal of the tax increase and where we're going to look at, and we set an aggressive goal, an aggressive challenge for the, for the administration on that, and we know it's, we know it's an aggressive challenge. It was not, it's one that we're hoping you take as an aggressive challenge and not as something that's supposed to be a crushing challenge.
Right.
All right? So we've seen how well your team has performed, and we, we're hoping it's an aspirational challenge, we're hoping that you take it in the spirit in which it was intended and not otherwise.
Right.
All right?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So we'll see how that goes. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So ordered without objection.
Thank you.
Go forth and do great things.
You got it. We'll do. Thank you for your support. Committee items, the Policy Committee meeting, which was held on 10/22/19, we're asking the board to accept the minutes of the Policy Committee that was held on that day as submitted.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the Policy Committee meeting minutes? No questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, so ordered without objection.
Thank you.
Go forth and do great things.
You got it.
More along the lines of they want to spend more time in art class, they want to spend more time in music, not necessarily like different ones, just.
More of the same.
Yeah, basically.
And then for the Leadership Council or the Leadership Meeting, you said he spoke about making physical changes to the school. Like, give me a map.
Um, he talked about some of the things that he did at his school and he said, you know, what's one thing that you could change? And everyone, all of his students said the bathroom. So they repainted them and they, you know, put pretty decorations up in the bathroom and made it look all nice and got new mirrors because they had dirty mirrors and things like that. So, and they, um, they implemented the system where they allowed students to paint their parking spots, um, and that was like a fundraiser. So it was just like, you know, little things to like, you know, get excited about around the school.
Alright, thank you.
Could you, uh, could you briefly describe the golden ticket system?
Sure. So when a teacher catches a student doing one of the Falcon Four, they are, uh, be safe, be respectful, be responsible and be positive, um, they'll write a student a golden ticket. And the student will take the golden ticket down to the office and I believe their names at the end of the week are announced over the loudspeaker, like these students received golden tickets. And then I think my understanding is that one of them gets drawn at the end of the week? Is that?
So with the golden ticket system, um, when they bring their ticket to the office, they get a lot of praise and hoopla from the office staff and they get a pencil, a principal's pencil, and they do get to go to the office on Friday, their names are announced, they help me lead the pledge, they help sing the school song over the announcements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Moving on to discussion items, the goals of the superintendent. Obviously as a board you had a chance to review these goals throughout the last six weeks. Uh, I just wanted to briefly, uh, for the public, just comment on the four main goals that we'll be looking at this year. Our goal has, uh, will be to increase student achievement and growth. We will have goals that will, uh, that will be assessed by, you know, the PSSA and a state, state standards. We've done that, uh, for the past four years. We also look at growth through math testing. Uh, and again, uh, the PSSAs really rate us on a state level, the math testing rates us on a national level in reading and math. So we feel those pieces are really good indicators of, of our students' academic success and it gives our administrators targets and their teachers to, uh, to really have our students perform very well. Uh, also, we look at other achievement levels. We look at SAT scores, ACT scores, Arnockian scores from our Western Center, APT testing as we look at state, national and global levels. So we'll continue with that on the, uh, on the growth and achievement side. On the professional development side, we continue to, we'll continue to refine our IST model and our MTSS, multi-tier systems of support, uh, through our, uh, through this school year. Uh, one of the things that we, we concentrate on will be our instructional strategies that focus, uh, uh, on, uh, teachers continually using effective research-based and technology integration strategies for the upcoming year. And we also continue to, um, train our teachers on trauma-informed as well as educate them on understanding classroom strategies for engaging students and decrease behavioral problems. So, uh, that will be as part of our professional development component. We always have a financial, a fiscal, uh, component that will be, uh, for this particular school year. Uh, we always want to, uh, have a balanced budget that reflects the lowest tax increase while maintaining the integrity of our instructional programs and co-curricular activities. We'll continue to use that as a goal. Uh, we also look at expenditure variance to have it under two and a half percent and we keep our building budgets, uh, uh, to a, uh, spending increase of less than one percent. And I must say, you know, over the last four years, we've done an excellent job, uh, as a board, uh, as administrative team and at our building levels to stay within these particular numbers. Uh, goal four, uh, is basically to provide relevant communication to each stakeholder group. Our focus this year, as we continue to look at our satisfaction survey, we'll put that out under the end of the school year. We continue to look at our, our, our communications, uh, through school wires and our web pages. Our overall building, uh, communications at each school will be, uh, a part of, uh, will be part of that goal. Our budget communications as they pick up here in the new year. Our Safe Schools Partnership Program that we've had in our second year, the Pots Grove Village has been a part of our communication plan. Our annual report, we'll have a second year of our annual reports, some more information will be out there regarding that as well. And we've already had our calendar committee for the 2021 school year as a way to have an interaction piece with our community. We look to further brand the Pots Grove School District and, and try to add to our value in the community and the surrounding area. Uh, we continue to develop our education foundation, we made great strides there, we continue to work with that. Continue to have a diverse co-curricular program in grades three through eight. Again, we continue with that goal. And we continue to look at, furthering develop our social media presence to communicate and promote community relations. Uh, also, uh, one of the things that we're working on and we'll be kicking off here this month is establish a district-level marketing framework that focuses on our charter school families, brick and mortar and cyber, and develop a framework with procedures and documents that promotes the school districts and halves our, 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 our students who aren't in our schools to reacquaint them with the Pots Grove School District. So we'll be kicking that piece off, uh, in the next couple of weeks before, before the break. We also established a MyVoice platform that the board approved last year, uh, for improving our school through teacher voice and agency. We'll do a presentation in the new year about how that's worked at the building level. Uh, and our early results is that we're doing a lot of building-specific pieces that has helped, helped our teachers really have, have skin in the game, if you will, and have a say, uh, at the building level. So that's a, an overview of the four superintendent's goals and what I'm going to, uh, you know, ask the board to do tonight, uh, is to prove those goals as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments on the goals? Okay. Well, I do have one comment. There was a lot of discussion, uh, among the board on the, uh, the goal, especially of the, uh, the percentage of, uh, what we were talking about for the increase, you know, the goal of the, the tax increase and where we're going to look at. And we set, um, an aggressive goal, an aggressive challenge, uh, for the, for the administration on that and we know it's, we know it's an aggressive challenge. It was not, it's one that we're, we're hoping you take as an aggressive challenge and, and not as something that's supposed to be a crushing challenge.
Right.
Alright? So, uh, we've, we've seen how well your team has performed and, and we, we're hoping it's an aspirational challenge, we're hoping that you take it in the spirit which was intended and, and not otherwise.
Right.
Alright?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So we'll see how that goes. So, with that, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Sort of without objection.
Thank you.
Go forth and do great things.
You got it, we'll do. Thank you for your support. Committee items, the Policy Committee meeting, which was held on the 10/22 of 19, we're asking the board to accept the minutes of the Policy Committee that was held on that day as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the Policy Committee meeting minutes? No questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Alright, so order without objection.
Moving on to seven-two operations, we're asking the operations and facilities committee to report out regarding the meeting held on November 4th.
Alright, you have a copy of the draft minutes in front of you. I wanted to go over a couple of things. First of all, um, you'll notice there, item number one, the district has agreed to lease space in the Pots Grove High School to television, who provides the, uh, the broadcasting for our own board meetings as well as, uh, other work for PCTV, uh, around the area. And so we welcome them to our facilities, uh, finally and formally. So welcome and thank you for all that you do for us. Um, in addition, we've talked about three different things there, uh, that are mentioned in the, in the minutes. Burner replacement for burners at three of the schools, Lower Pots Grove West and the Middle School. Uh, now, these are burners, uh, in boilers at three of those schools and the estimated cost of those burners is about $215,000 for the six burners in those three boilers. Um, the existing burners are 15 to 25 years old and we're going to be replacing those. And I think that's a, an item four next month, if I'm not mistaken, we just, I was just on tonight's meeting. Okay. Very good. Uh, so we'll talk about that during the business costs and we had a, a, a report on that and we talked that over in the meeting, so there's that. Um, the fire control panels was something that we asked you to do right away as we're, after that meeting, at our policy meeting.
But we didn't talk about it at our last meeting, so that's on tonight.
That's on tonight as well. Okay, and that was $42,000, basically. That was immediate because those were, those were life safety issues in particular, uh, that we were concerned about. So fire control panels at Pots Grove Middle School and Lower Pots Grove Elementary School, so those are being taken care of. Um, and the last, the last thing that we talked about was district-wide theatrical rigging, uh, in each of the five buildings and that's something that we're still going to be looking at next month, um, talking about and looking at. So, uh, that was what we talked about at our meeting, so that's the report out. The draft minutes are there for your review, should you care to look at them. Questions or comments on those draft minutes? No? Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Moving on to seven point three, athletics and co-curricular, we're asking the co-curricular committee to report out on their November 19th meeting.
So I'm going to give the report out because Patty is unfortunately not here. Uh, so we actually recovered a lot of information at this particular meeting. One of the pieces that we covered was the idea of having the unified or United Sports Group, which is part of the special education, I mean, Special Olympics program, where we were going to have a, up to about, I believe it's 30 students, uh, 15 from the Special Olympics side on IEPs that are from Pots Grove, 15 that are going to be playing with them. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to see about bringing a track and field team, uh, so it'll be all-encompassing of those type of groups. Uh, there's going to be a, a polar plunge that, is this still in the, are going to happen? Where's Gary? Gary here? Gary's not here. Okay, so Gary had mentioned that there would be possibly be like a polar plunge, but the polar plunge is really an indoor polar plunge, it's not really a big polar plunge. Uh, and they're going to ask obviously school board directors and administrators to possibly go along with this polar plunge for...
Just, just school board.
Oh, just school board members? No, I think you were involved. We already talked to you and Dr. Shirk about being in this. Uh, and this is going to happen, uh, I believe next Friday, December, uh, 13th. So they're hoping to get people to go and sign up for this at the Sodderton Indoor Pool, uh, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. I'm also happy to say we can, I can now announce the names or who is going to be the first class of the Pots Grove Athletic Hall of Fame, all the inductees. I'm allowed to say this is on this thing, so I'm saying it. Alright, he's not here, so.
Oh, you're cool.
Hey. Uh, okay, so the first class inductees are going to be Randy Burkert, class of 78. It's going to be Gina, I'm gonna, I know I'm going to mess these names up, Bria Chani, class of 1998, Roxanne Murgia.
Murgia.
Murgia, class of 1981, Mallory Green, class of 2003, and, I'm missing somebody. Kurt Wrigley, class of 2079, and the entire...
It says Wrigley.
Yeah.
1979.
1979, didn't I say that? 2079? Oh, boy. 1979. And then the entire class of 2012, boys, PIA double A state championship cross-country team. Uh, they're the only team from Pots Grove that actually won a state championship, so as the committee decided, we're actually going to invite the entire team. So we're gonna, obviously, every, we're getting the whole group together. Obviously you got the five individuals, you got the one team which encompassed, uh, approximately 20 students. We don't know how many of the 20 students will be able to come back, but we're going to invite them all. Alright? That was that. In the next meeting, uh, we're also going to send to the board for a, uh, request of $1,950 to use from Market Street Funds to replace a school board, a baseball school board. Uh, we of course get our normal monthly update on the Pots Grove Education Foundation budget and such like that, and I could tell you right now, the budget's going better than it's ever been. And we also went over some of the grants that were going to be given out, and I think we believe we gave out eight, eight grants to all the students. Everybody that applied for a grant actually got a grant because we were able to get enough money for all of the grants that were requested. Lastly, we went over was the cyber charter school information. Now, Dr. Shirk's already brought up this information, so I'm not going to say and get into this. The only thing I'm going to say is that, oh, we found out that it's 119 students currently in charter. We have 69 in the cyber charter, we have 40 in a brick and mortar, and then we got, obviously, it was an in-depth program that he's, uh, Dr. Shirk's already working on to go through to get, see if we can get, bring some of these students back to Pots Grove. Alright, and that was the crust of the meeting. Anything else?
Snuck in conveniently, you are out of town, we need to have a jump in the pool, so that was...
That's nice. I will not be here. You all jump. Alright, and that's my meeting minutes.
You can go early, it's nine o'clock in the morning.
No, I'm not here, I'm in Disney.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. We'd like to move down to the Policy Committee, uh, meeting that was held on the 19th and we'd ask the Policy Committee Chair to report out, please.
Alright, so we started off our discussion, um, continuing our talk on actually the therapy dog policy, so we can let Ring of Rock students know that, uh, that is in the works. This came about, I, I don't know, a year or so ago, I had read an article about this, approached, uh, Dr. Shirk, uh, to see, uh, his support, uh, and then with his support brought it to the school board, with their support brought it to the policy committee, uh, where we've been looking at this, I don't know, last three, four months, I guess. A lot of research went into it, um, and we put, uh, though this is kind of an upcoming thing, uh, kind of a new thing, uh, schools are starting to use for, uh, one of their tools for trauma-informed care, there's not a lot of policies out, especially in the state of Pennsylvania. So, uh, we were somewhat starting from scratch on that, uh, at least in regards to, to local districts. So, uh, we included in a number of things, um, including certification, uh, an appropriate certification program, uh, information on liability insurance, um, ways parents can opt out their, their child from participating, uh, and also discussion, uh, in that staff that are approved, interested in or approved for this, um, you know, doing this can't interfere from their regular, uh, duties. Uh, this was moved to 30-day public review, uh, so I guess we'll be on the agenda for next month for approval. Then went to, uh, continued our discussion on policy 333, professional development. Uh, the committee had asked previously that Dr. Harney review, uh, any current policies that are in place that would relate to that policy. Uh, in doing that, um, it raised more questions that he's going to, uh, contact, uh, PSBA for some clarification, uh, before we finalize that policy. Move to 805.2, school security personnel. This policy outlines the responsibilities of the district safety coordinator, uh, who is Dr. Harney, and sets expectations for SROs, school police officers, which we don't use, and security guards. Uh, new mandated training, uh, is required, uh, it is the same training for SROs and security guards, which, which, um, we found interesting, but, but that is a, a, a state requirement, so they'll be receiving the same training. Uh, this policy was at the time moved to 30-day public review, uh, we've since pulled that, uh, because, uh, came across a policy, I think it's 225, uh, that discusses relationships with law enforcement agencies, so we're going to, uh, compare those two, merge or at least marry them, uh, so they connect to each other. Uh, policy 209, health examinations and screenings. Uh, this is a policy that came about because, uh, the state, uh, wanted to include, um, times where, uh, schools can release health information on students, uh, when it's of an emergent nature. Um, no, no concerns with that, but in reviewing the policy, uh, the current policy, uh, as well as additional changes, um, there are some concerns that were in discussion with and continue to discuss, so that policy will be, uh, reviewed, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, food services was also on the agenda, we didn't, uh, have a lot of time to get to this, um, so that will be on next month's, or next meeting's agenda. Um, I, I don't know, a year or so ago, the state had changed, uh, things and we had a change of policy last year, uh, so we could no longer, um, have special, special lunches for students that owed money. Uh, the statute has again changed, but I just received information right before this meeting, uh, that there, there's some confusion between the state statute and federal regulations. Um, so Mr. Ness, Mr. Ness will be at the next meeting, um, to kind of get into some detail with that so we can fix the policy as appropriate. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Moving on to the report of the Curriculum Integration Technology Committee.
Alright, I'll take care of this one as well because Mrs. Custer unfortunately is not here. So in this particular, uh, committee meeting, you're going to see, one of the things I'm very proud about with the curriculum committee is that we have worked very hard to make sure the community's informed and prepared for all the different things that are coming. In the past, we used to wait till February with to see the board, in February, March type, timeframe of when we'd actually look at course projection. And we sort of like would have to just do it right then and there and that was it, right? We've actually, as a committee now, are actually discussing these things all the way in November, uh, to bring to the board in December so that the school actually has more time to prepare and make sure the curriculum is at the level we want it to be at for our students. So as you'll see later on in this, um, agenda, we have all four classes available to approve. First one's going to be Calc III, second one's going to be design thinking, prototype creation, third one's going to be robotics engineering, the fourth one's going to be music uncharted. Now, there was a lot of discussion about Calc III, uh, being the fact that unfortunately it's not a dual enrollment type class, but it's obviously an advanced math class, as in will we have enough students, will we have the education, the, the teacher, will we have everything prepared for it? Uh, what we've just found out was that because we've started math in our schooling so earlier, uh, so much earlier for some of our advanced students, they're actually running out of classes. We added BC, AB, uh, AP, Calc BC a couple of years ago, when we needed that. Now we're at that point where we're having students ending their senior year with no available math class. Uh, we don't have another dual enrollment available to us at this time, so we felt Calc III was the next logical choice. So we're going to add the Calc III, or at least ask the board to add the Calc III, while we continue to look for possible another subject if that comes to, to play. The other three subjects are pretty much as they, they sound, robotic engineering with the project lead the way and everything like that, design thinking, obviously music uncharted and such like that. The second, one of the other things we spoke about was geography. Uh, we found that some of the students are having a little bit of issue, uh, when they're at the, it was back-to-school night, I believe, that they had a little bit of issue in trying to pinpoint where a certain state was on the map, which we didn't really appreciate. However, we've, we talked it out and we're going to look over the curriculum of what we're actually teaching in geography, obviously at a lower level, so maybe we need to enhance some of this. We'll, we'll check on that. Uh, lastly though, is the one part that we've had, I guess, kind of a little bit of interesting discussion on social media is the personal finance course. Uh, Mrs. Custer brought up a personal finance course to the administration about possibly, is it something that needs to be offered to our students? Well, we do have a personal finance course, we have a couple of different personal finance courses. The question just is, is do we think at this time it should be a requirement for some of our students? That's something we discussed. Obviously, I know this is going on in social media because there's like 95 different comments and such like that on it, and some really like the idea of personal finance and some level being a requirement, and some obviously are going to have issue with that because of scheduling, you know, how many, how many things can you actually fit? A little bit later, either, I don't know, I didn't talk to you, I don't know if Bob's going to bring it up about our meeting with Joe Cerisi, or I'll bring it up, one of us two will bring it up. Uh, and we found out that I believe signed in law for 2019, there's a personal finance course that now can be counted, or will be counted as some type of core credit, whether it be counted as math, a social studies, a science, an English, something. It will be available to count as a graduate, towards the graduation requirement in some level. If we're, and again, this is nothing is set in stone, as we said, this is just a very preliminary discussion, even if we decided to take it to the Policy Committee, which is where we'd have to go out of our committee, it does not, we cannot make, it'll go to Policy Committee next, you're looking 2021 at the earliest, graduation class. But it was something that was just the start of discussion, and I know this has been bouncing around a lot. Alright? Um, yeah, that's about, and we, we have more data, no one wants to discuss that, we have more data though, as well. So does anybody have any questions about any of the three, out of the four subjects or about finance? And back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Moving on to action items for personnel, section eight, eight point one, professional staff appointments. We're asking the board to approve the professional staff appointments as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to combine eight point one to eight point four. No, M5, include five. Eight point one to eight point five.
We have a motion to approve eight point one through eight point five. Does anybody have any questions on eight point one through eight point five? If not, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Sort of without objection.
Moving on to eight point six, supplemental appointments. We're asking the board to approve the supplemental appointments as submitted.
They're moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the supplemental positions, eight point six. Uh, are there any questions on?
Hey, one question is the only one. Uh, what is a substitute faculty manager?
I can tell you the substitute part. Dr. Shirk, we talked, talked more to the faculty manager position.
The faculty manager spot was, uh, is, is someone who manages our games at the middle school, wrestling, basketball, uh, boys and girls events, et cetera, and our current, our current, uh, faculty manager is on a medical leave.
Okay, that's why we...
So we need to stop.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Alright then. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Sort of without objection.
Moving on to supplemental resignations, we ask the board to approve the supplemental resignations as submitted.
I'd like to combine eight point seven to eight point 10.
We have a motion and a second, a motion and a second to approve eight point seven through eight point 10. Uh, are there any questions on eight seven through eight 10? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Sort of without objection.
Moving on to action items, uh, for business, we are going to ask the board to authorize Mr. Ness to pay the bills for the month of December, and the reason, obviously, because we already have one, one meeting and we're not quite ready to do that yet.
We have a motion and a second to authorize payment of the bills, uh, when we're good and ready. Um, does anybody have any objection to, any questions on that? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Alright.
Moving on to nine point two, assessment appeal settlement agreement with Booker Ridge. Uh, our, our act, our recommended action is to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter into agreement or agreements for the properties identified on the chart below, send the assessments of the properties as indicated on the chart below for the 2019-20. as indicated on the chart below for the 2019-20 school year, a school tax year, as well as a 2020-21 for each subsequent tax years until a change in property assessments pursuant to applicable law.
So you don't have to repeat that again at the next motion. I'll make a motion to combine 9.2 and 9.3.
Yep.
Mr. Parker, thank you very much.
Next time, I'm going to ask, yeah, Mr. Davis to read it.
Yeah, that's how that works. Okay, so we have, we have a motion to approve items 9.2 and 9.3. Does anybody have any questions on those two?
Who's the session?
Assessment appeals. Okay, very good. So if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Onward and upward to 9.4, the burner replacement, fire control upgrades.
We're, 9.4, burner replacement. We're asking the board to approve the replacement burners and the boilers at three school buildings as presented.
Well, we're going to have to have somebody move it first. Okay, very good. We have a, we'll take a motion over here from Mr. and a second over here. So we have a motion and a second for the burner replacement. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
5.9, fire control panel upgrades.
9.5.
9.1, what did I say? 5.1.
It's okay.
Dyslexia, it's, now that it kicks in, I apologize.
It's okay. I've kept you up too late.
9.5, fire control panel upgrades. We're asking the board to approve the fire control panels at the middle school and lower Pots Grove Elementary at a cost of $42,776.
We have a motion and a second to approve 9.5, fire control panel upgrades. Does anybody have any questions on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
9.6, transportation routing software upgrade. We're asking the board to approve the upgrade to the transportation routing software as presented.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't combine everything, because I wanted to get to this.
You were waiting for it.
I was just like, what?
Do you actually have a question?
The, the cost of $3,750, that seems to be composite of the installation, training, support for the year. So how much of that, what's the cost for next year?
It's about $800 a year.
Okay.
Going on.
You mentioned it's a different company. Would you mind kind of elaborating for the, for the sake of the public?
Sure. When we, and I apologize for this, because this was not anticipated. When we did our, our legwork, we contacted our bus routing software, which is BusBoss Orbit Software, and found out what vendors coordinated well with their software. So we got a list of vendors, and then we went to those vendors, and that's where we got the wireless geotab system. As we're implementing it, we found that we don't have one component of the BusBoss software that's needed to provide the routing communication to the geotab system. So that's, BusBoss's software works well, but we didn't have every component of the software. So.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion and a second from outside of the room. Anybody have any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
9.7, contracted services from Kelly Services for guest teachers. We're asking the board to authorize administration to contract Kelly Services to provide up to five guest teachers at a rate of $137 per day, per guest teacher, with $100 being paid to the guest teacher.
Does anybody have any questions on this contracted service? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Action item for education, conference attendance. We're asking the board to approve the conference attendance item as submitted.
I'll make a motion to combine 10.1 to 10.5.
We have a motion and a second. She beat you to the buzzer. I'm sorry. 10.1 through 10.5 have been combined. Does anybody have any questions? No questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to action items for policy. We're asking the board to approve the policies as submitted.
Can, I didn't realize, I thought this was still in 30-day. Can we remove number two for now? Is that, Mark, how do we do that?
805.1?
Just vote on, right, remove 805.1, just vote on 805. We need to review.
Table that, want to table that?
Yeah, table it.
Do we need a, a, a?
It's in the agenda, so I don't know.
Mr. Davis, if we want to table an item on policy, do we have to, do we have to have a motion to table?
Sure, a motion to table, a motion to table. There's not a bad discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, approve 805, table 805.1.
Do I have a second to approve 805?
Jim approved, seconded.
We don't second a motion to table?
No, seconded.
We have a motion to approve 805?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor approving policy 805?
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Okay, so now.
New business.
I always look to you first for new business.
That's fine. No, I appreciate it. And I, what I, what I'd like to just take, just a short minute on new business is to thank Dr. Ziegler, our assistant superintendent, Dr. Ziegler stat, Dr. Ziegler, Dr. Ziegler's staff, his counseling staff, Dr. Harney, all of our directors, supervisors. Obviously, we had a, we had a district tragedy take place yesterday, and I just want to say that, you know, as a superintendent, you know, you have opportunities to look at your staff and come up with proud moments, and today, the last 24 hours was a proud moment for our staff. It was, as you heard me say this before, there was structure, there was details that were, were just immaculate as far as the follow-through goes. And as the leader, and as, I just want to say, I'm proud of what they have, what they've done for our students and our community. So I wanted to just say that we're still working through some of the pieces with our tragedy, but we have systems in place that are, are working through this community piece. And, you know, anytime you have a loss, a loss of life, it's, it's tragic, no matter how old you are. So, or how many times you experienced it in a career, it's just, it just feels like the first time, you know, and that's, you know, that's really for me talking personally. But I just wanted to publicly say that I appreciate all the efforts that took place, and as a community, you should be very proud of the, of the staff administrators and the people that you have working for you, because they were just phenomenal. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, and we'll keep moving forward and, you know, get through this, get through the process. So, thank you.
I would like to second that and express my appreciation. Our time here is very short, and every day, we need to be thankful for our time and the people that we share our time here with, and recognize that, you know, we come to these meetings, we see people every day. You have to appreciate them and never take anything for granted. Reach out and recognize, and always give people the benefit of the doubt. Take time to say hello, take time to say thank you. Be thoughtful, be generous, be kind. And I'll just leave it there.
Great. All right, then. The last piece of new business I wanted to bring up to was, just the other week, Bob, Dr. Shirk, and I had an opportunity to have a meeting with one of our representatives, Joe Sharisi. It was a combined school board meeting with Springford, Upper Perk, Pottstown, and of course, us. And I thought it was a very positive meeting in the fact that each of our school districts got an opportunity to discuss with Joe as into what some issues are that we're dealing with, that we would like to see his representation take back to the full committee and the full representatives of the state. Obviously, one thing I was very surprised at hearing is even though we all think of ourselves as a community, and all our, our problems are the same as other problems, it's amazing how different a community will be. Whereas in Springford, one of the biggest issues they were dealing with was the police force. They actually have their own police force for the school, whereas we use, obviously, you know, upper, lower, and stuff like that, or other police forces, which I found very interesting, versus us being a much smaller district, as in biggest problem we're going to have right now is the cyber charters and such like that. One of the things that was interesting, though, and maybe disheartening, was the mishmash that some of our politicians and representatives, they'd literally put in bills that have no shot of ever getting approved. Just to put in bills, and then they throw all kinds of junk in that bill, which is really disheartening to see that. But I was, we got going with that. I mean, he gave us a page of like five pages long, both front and back, of all these different bills that are going through the system. And some of them, no shot, never going to get approved, and some of them obviously had good wording and such like that. So I did feel that it was a very positive meeting. I do hope that he continues meetings like that, and other school board directors get a chance to go and, and discuss the different things. So I, I did like the, the meeting. And he did bring into a possible discussion, as in something the school representatives, students have already done, as in they actually meet with the other school representatives and such. It wouldn't be a bad idea to have almost like a luncheon to where you could bring in multiple school district directors from an Upper Perk, from, not just ours, our, you know, and community, but you could bring in a Phoenixville, you could bring in, you know, like you have with your, the chamber of Congress.
Right.
Almost something like that to get ideas, because what's working for one district may work for your district, you just don't know about it yet. And those type of ideas and sharing and networking could be something that could be beneficial.
Does anybody else have anything else they would like to share under new business tonight? Nobody? All right. Very good. That brings us back to public comment once again, for the third time tonight. It's kind of like drowning, we're on down for the third time, and nothing. All right, very good. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move, second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in January.